Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of a Whole for May 8th. If you could please read the rule.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmembers Spatafor. Councilmembers Fitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
And Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Seven members present, you have a forum of committee.
First item on our agenda are the minutes from May 1st. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes as written of the May 1st Committee of the Whole Meeting.
You have a motion on minutes, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, this is the time to come forward and make comment if you would give us your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Michael Lynn, I see that today the mayor's office is up for budgetary presentations. We know that there's a really inflated budget at that office. I don't know what power you all have to rectify that budget or look into that budget, but we know, looking through the budget, I think there was $111,000 for an assistant, which I believe is the executive assistant, or deputy mayor as his term. I want us to, in this council, to reflect on what the charter says that position is supposed to entail. As of maybe the last two meetings, we haven't even had a mayor here, which is fine, I don't want him here either anyways, but at the same time, the duties that this position holds, what abilities they actually have by way of the charter, we know that we've had issues with understanding and interpreting the charter. This council doesn't really have their own lawyer here to really explain to them outside of the city's opinion, and I know this attorney is supposed to speak for both you and the mayor, but it seemed to be different from what's gone on in the past. But when you're looking through that budget and that position specifically, what is that position charged to do and what abilities do they have executively? Secondary to that, with that being stated, in anywhere we've seen charter ordinances or parts of the charter being violated, there is Chapter 5, which is penalties for violation of the charter. And any person found guilty of an act constituting a violation of this charter may be punished by a fine not exceeding $500 or by imprisonment for not to exceed 90 days or both in the discretion of the court. This section shall not operate to limit or prejudice the power to remove officers or discharge employees as provided in this charter. I've seen multiple charter violations from the executive staff going way back four or five years from now, and I'm sure probably years prior to that. But we gotta start taking this stuff serious. I mean, we all agreed on this charter, voted on it, now we have a charter amendment conversation coming up in November, but up until this point, you know, we've had some severe charter penalties and I would say just people moving how they want to move. So as you guys do and deal with this budget, and I believe May 17th or May 11th, one of the two, you guys are gonna come out with your charter, or excuse me, with your recommendations for a budget, keeping all of that in mind, and in our charter that the people voted on and you all built ordinances around, especially as we're speaking about what the city attorney advises you all of, that we keep in mind that there is penalties for not moving along this charter as you're supposed to. With that being stated, if we could get that conversation about what this person's charge is with $111,000 for the assistant, that'd be great today as you guys talk to the mayor and talk about what his budget is. Also, I got 10 seconds left, with all this money of employees' positions that are not being filled, where that money goes, and if it's not just, if it's thrown into the general budget to just be used by this department, please figure out that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Yes, hello. Erica Lynn, as we see on the agenda today, there's a few presentations, but I think that one of the most important is obviously the mayor's budget presentation. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, I think, things that I've been saying since all of the budget presentations have been coming up. How important a lot of what I, just as a citizen, and a lot of the citizens in general have really advocated for, when it comes to the lines of questioning, when it comes to the answers, when it comes to the type of follow-up, I would say that the mayor's presentation on the budget, you know, his office, is the absolute most important one. This budget sets the course for the city's entire financial priorities and spending for not only the year, but the ramifications that that can have, we know. That can have a lot of long-lasting ramifications and impacts. So I think that the line of questioning does need to be reflective, not just of what you might want to know, but what's important for us as citizens to know. The presentation should outline how the city's gonna allocate resources, where it's gonna focus its efforts, I think we kind of all know that, you know, in terms of public services, infrastructure, but a lot of the questions are asked on whether or not there have been spending cuts made. I think it's safe to say if we're not cutting things and we're actually adding things, what kind of substantiation is there for those needs when we know that we are in crisis mode? We will not have ARPA funds next year, we have to take that into consideration. I think also, going back to giving you a better understanding, it gives the public a very much better understanding of the budget, of the priorities, when you all ask questions. It gives the public an idea of how this budget is gonna impact the community. It also, by way of your questions, their answers, it gives us an opportunity to identify things that should be of concern or might be of concern. I think a lot of times it's just rubber stamped, it's just status quo, it's just commonly known that we just passed the budget, regardless of what ramifications or impact that it might have for a long time to come, and it's gotten us to in a really bad situation that without those ARPA funds that we had, we would be in an extremely bad situation that the entire public would know about because there are certain services that would've stopped. Additionally, the budget presentation, it's supposed to be a time for transparency and for accountability, so I think that it is your responsibility to us to ask questions, hold accountability, if there aren't questions that are answered in a very direct way, that there is follow-up had, that it's not just we'll check into it and then we never speak of it again, because that, again, ensures that it's being allocated in a fair way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the council at this Seeing none, we'll move on to our departmental budget presentations. The first one is the mayor and community media.
Good evening, is this close enough, do I need to move closer?
A little closer.
A little closer, how's this, better?
That's better, thank you.
Good deal, okay. All right, everyone, thanks for having us here, I'm Mark Lawrence, Deputy Chief of Staff. I'll start at the top with the seven questions from council. What's the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed? There is no significant difference in our budget from last year to this year. Question two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? The answer to that is no, there are not. Are there any rate increases or fee increases, is question three. This is not applicable, we have no rate or fees increases. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? The answer to that is also no. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, specifics? There are not. Our department, our department, excuse me, did not receive any ARPA funding in the current fiscal year, so this is not applicable, number six. And number seven is also not applicable due to the fact we have no carryforward ARPA funds.
Before I turn this over to Emily, I would disagree with you on six and seven. The mayor was allocated $1.9 million in ARPA funds to allocate out, and it was given to his department, so I'm not sure why you're answering no.
I interpreted that question to mean our office for our operational use.
Again, I disagree with your answer, so...
I understand.
If you could, again, council didn't pass those, all we did was pass a line item that went to the mayor's office.
Right.
Which was 1.9.
Right.
So if you could look at that, and because some of those might be carried forward to the next year, depending on when the contracts are signed.
My understanding is council was apprised throughout that situation of where that money was spent.
I don't want to get into an argument, Mark, but we heard that from public service, we heard from police and fire, all of them have been asked the same question, and all of them have answered, even though they were before us before, and answered the question. I expect the same from you. With that, Emily.
Hi, Mark, hi Jane, thanks for being here. Just a quick question, can you explain the increase in miscellaneous operating and what that's going towards?
Yeah, half of that can be attributed to a change in the way that finance is accounting for a couple of our lines, the veterans line and the Ramadan dinner. Those funds were sort of being lost track of year to year, so by budgeting for them, we can keep an eye on, and they won't show as negatives later. The other half is really related to day-to-day increases in expenses, as we kind of continue to open up and go to more things and be more active. We're busier and costs are up, so that's those two pieces to that.
Sure, that makes sense, and just to clarify, the Ramadan dinner and the veteran committee are separate line items, so that wouldn't fall in miscellaneous operating. All right, thank you.
Yep.
No further questions.
Are there councilmember questions at this time? Councilmember Fitzley.
I'm confused by the last exchange, so you... Yes, sorry. I'm confused by the last exchange. If the Ramadan and the...
The veterans.
Veterans thing already have line items, then how can they be in...
I don't think they're in miscellaneous operating, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that it would probably just be...
No, you're right, they're separate lines within our mayor's office budget, you're right.
And to clarify then, the increase in miscellaneous operating is because of the increase in costs that you...
That's correct, that's correct.
That's what I interpreted, but...
Well, I just, will I be clear?
Is that...
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Hussein.
So the question was that, first of all, we went from, I don't know, maybe some five positions in the mayor's office, I think back in fiscal year 2015, and now we have eight. I know that we have a labor relations position, correct? We have a chief strategy officer, okay, which, right now, if you could tell me, because it's critical, what is the work that, at this time, and some people, and frankly, and I'm talking, I guess, to you, Mr. Sessa, some folks are actually calling our CSO the deputy mayor. I need some clarification on what these roles are and what we're expecting of these people now. So with regards to the CSO, Shelby's in that position, correct?
That's right.
And is she doing the work that the ordinance actually calls for?
Yes.
Or is she doing special projects?
She's doing both.
She's doing both?
She is doing both.
We also have a digital media manager, correct?
Correct.
And then what are the other five positions?
So they would be, I mean, the mayor's office budget pays for the mayor. Jane, Shelby.
Okay, hold on.
Myself, yeah.
So Jane, Jane, we've heard you called a lot of different things as well, what is your official position?
I am the deputy mayor, chief of staff.
Deputy mayor, and you are the only deputy mayor, correct?
No, we have two.
Who's the second?
Shelby.
So our CSO is the deputy mayor.
Yes, she's also a deputy mayor, we have two.
Can you define deputy mayor for me, what does that mean?
Well, the deputy mayor has a, it is a position that has authority. When the mayor decided to choose or change the titles, he felt that in order to give both positions some authority...
Hold on one second. Can you move the microphone closer, please?
Just a little bit, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
So the deputy mayor is a title, and it has prestige and authority when you have that title, in terms of our duties for both myself and Shelby. When the mayor decided to give us both that title, he also separated in terms of the differences that we do. I do most of the internal departments and she does most, she does the external department, so we split when it comes to that. For me, myself, I also do special projects, and so does Shelby. She also is responsible for the chief strategist responsibilities that the city council has outlined, and those are things that she does. For me, I'm also responsible for being liaison to the city council, I'm also the executive assistant, I've taken now that role. I also hold special, I conduct special projects, sometimes I work with not just the internal departments, but I may also work with some of the departments that Shelby may be responsible for overseeing. But I'm also responsible for being the liaison for some of the mayor's special committees, task forces, such as the mental health task force, the gun violence task force, those are two very important task force that the mayor has assigned, and I'm very pleased to be part of that. I also work very closely sometimes with Shelby when it comes to conducting special projects. So we work together on a few items, but definitely the difference is that she does most of the external projects, such as public service, public works, or that's the same thing, I apologize, parks. She also may have, as I mentioned, the chief strategy officer roles and responsibilities. One other thing that I'm responsible for doing as well is, and we take turns here, and so does the deputy chief of staff, we may represent the mayor, we attend different events, and so if the mayor isn't able to attend, for whatever reason, then I have the privilege, and I say that to city council because I not just represent the mayor, but I also represent the city. And it is such a privilege to be able to go before our community and talk about the various things that we're doing, so I do consider it a privilege. So those are just some of the things that we do. The mayor has chosen to separate our functions, and as I said, the biggest, the key thing for us both is the fact that she does most of the external and I do the internal. But there may be times where we may need to work together, for whatever reason, and we may work on a special project together, and we do.
With all due respect, I ask the question because I'm struggling, number one, I'd like to know how closely Shelby was consulted throughout this entire process with regards to this particular budget. Beyond that, what I'm struggling with is that we have somebody that is supposed to be solely focused, that's why we created the ordinance, and that's why we approved funding in the first fiscal year budget, right, to support that, and then several subsequent to that. I'm struggling with the fact that, as an example, we have $11.6 million structural deficit, but we were told over and over again, we don't have a plan, but we're working out a plan. That is the sole reason, right, for us bringing on an individual to look at that type of issue, when we talk about short-term obligations, long-term obligations, we talk about inefficiencies within departments, across departments, and we're just now saying, we're sitting down and we're starting to talk about these things. I think we put so much else on her plate while adding additional staff to the office that she can't do the work that we expect to get done with the funding that we are approving as part of our efforts up here at the dais. So we have to, we have to figure that out, we have to remedy that. Mark, you also have, so you are the deputy chief of staff, so we have an assistant to you, correct? What is your role?
I'm not aware of any staff additions that council hasn't been approved of.
I'm just asking the question, what...
Well, you mentioned that earlier, I just wanted to be clear, this council approved my position as citizen advocate back in...
We did.
2018, 2019.
And is that, so is that your role now?
I do the point of order.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Fitzley.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm not quite, council has, the only positions council has approved, because we were told by the city attorney that we're not involved in, you know, hiring or firing, so the only positions that we really have authority to approve was the CSO, and, you know, there are a whole bunch of questions of what the percentage is, she's doing CSO stuff versus deputy mayor stuff. We didn't approve the citizens, because we don't have the authority to do so. We didn't approve either deputy mayor, because we don't have the authority to do so, nor did we approve the chief of staff, or the assistant chief of staff, or the citizens advocate, we don't have any approval to do any of those. The charter clearly states that the mayor, the mayor and the mayor has an executive assistant, and any other appointed positions after that do not go through council for approval. The only thing that we approved was the language in the resolution calling for the CSO. If I'm mistaken, somebody jump in and tell me, but I want to make sure that we throw that out and we clarify that situation, thank you.
I think the only correction that I would give you on that, Councilmember Fitzley, is when we approve the budget, you have the personnel line. Now, how that personnel line is divided, you could give it to all one employee, you know, I mean...
Yeah, I agree with that, and I appreciate you saying that, I think that that is kind of a split hand from there with that, but the specific positions we have not approved, we approved a budget that has personnel dollars, but we have not approved the specific We've approved the budget that has a specific dollar, line dollar amount, but we have not approved specific positions, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
If I might jump in here.
Yes.
The charter only mentions an executive, an executive assistant to the mayor who takes the place of, and I think Mr. Sessa said that she was appointed the executive assistant. I've worked in seven cities, the term deputy is used interchangeably with assistant, all different, it's a title, that's all it is. It gets down to whether the budget has been adopted, which gives money for personnel, and it is really up to the mayor to decide how that is...
And I, if I may, and I think that's generally what I said, you know, I understand what the executive assistant, and that it can be entitled anything, so I get that, and that is what the charter says. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Councilmember Hussein.
Nope, I, no, I appreciate the clarification. So, and what I'm trying to do, because I certainly know how the budget works, you know, when we look at that personnel line item within the mayor's office, I want to feel comfortable when I vote yes on that particular line item, so I really do need to know what we're getting out of each one, sorry, each one of these positions. So with regard to you, Mark, you are currently the...
Deputy Chief of Staff, by title, yes.
Yep. And what's your role?
My role is to help kind of run the administrative side of the mayor's office. My role is to be a resource to residents who call, who have issues, and to advise the mayor, and to generally assist him in running the city. And all the rest I can tell you is in our job descriptions that we provided council last summer.
Yeah, and I, so, and the reason why I'm asking is, you know, frankly, when we first heard of the idea of a citizen advocate, I was all for it. But then shortly thereafter, we started talking about, because again, all of this was conceptual at one point, then we started talking about having an entire department, and then that was actually organized, right, an entire department for departments, and I'm sorry, for neighborhood and citizen engagement. And then I, you know, I was still somewhat on board, and then we ended up with the 3-1-1 call system, where pretty much every single call, if it goes to a main line, is then rerouted to 3-1-1, right?
Not quite, but right.
So we still have their desk phone, but pretty much every call is routed to 3-1-1, so I'm just, in terms of the citizen advocate side of things, we have a lot of redundancy. When you want to talk about redundancies, and you want to talk about issues with budget, and you want to talk about efficiencies, and particularly with this financial crisis we have, because we really do, we have a serious, serious issue, and I don't know if we're all taking it serious enough. So I'm gonna be frank, I'm looking for cuts, and I just don't understand, I mean, we have citizen advocacy here, and here, and here, and here, and engagement here, and we're all doing that work too, and it's incredibly important. My question is, you know, is there enough work within that office to do that when you consider all the other departments, and all the other shops, and all the other tech tools and things of that nature that we're using? So that's interesting to me. What else do we have? Those are five positions, we have three additional.
I'm not sure who else you're...
Right now, we have our labor relations position, we have our CSO, we have our digital media manager, we have our second deputy mayor, we have a deputy chief of staff, so we actually have an assistant to our deputy mayor, so I need the three others.
My understanding is that the digital media individual is not paid for out of the mayor's budget, this was the position that was funded by bringing Lansing Living In-House, so by bringing Lansing Living In-House, we're able to use that savings for this individual as well as, this is where we're actually finding an efficiency, because they're able to do design work for multiple departments upon request as well.
Okay.
If it's the position that I'm thinking you're thinking of...
Well, I'm, so what I'm, I would hope you know what that is, it's in your office. What I'm doing is I'm actually going from the documentation that you gave us, that says that you have eight positions within the mayor's office, and one of the footnotes is that this, let me see, that the communication in the digital manager position was in fact moved to the mayor's office.
Okay.
So that's what I'm going on.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so what else do we have?
And you would be left with our office manager and scheduler?
And scheduler?
Right, two separate, two separate roles?
Same person?
Different roles, no, different...
So you have someone that just does schedules?
Scheduling and appointments, boards and commissions.
Okay, so those are two positions, what's the other, so there's one more.
Mayor.
Oh, what about Scott Bean?
What does he do? Scott Bean's the mayor, the city communications director.
So we have a office manager, we have a scheduler, she does schedules and appointments, and we have Scott Bean. What about faith-based?
We have a full-time community and faith-based manager, that's Lucy.
And that's my point, so again, we have somebody that's job...
Whose birthday is today, happy birthday Lucy.
Is to interface with the community.
That's right.
To engage citizens, because I know who it is, and I see her out in the community.
That's right.
Here's my issue, right, I don't understand how this has been allowed to happen, frankly, we need to take a little bit of blame. We have continued to add, and add, and add, and we're not getting anything additional in the dollars, I promise you we're not.
I would respectfully disagree with that analysis.
I would respectfully disagree, because I'm out in the community more than you, with all due respect.
Okay.
You know I am, and I have not seen, frankly, the return on these dollars.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna be honest with you, and everywhere I go, people are talking about it, and I listen, I take it in, I promise you I'm not in those meetings bashing anybody, but frankly, it's, this is the conversation that the community is having, community-wise. So at some point, we need more than we have somebody that's doing community relations, we have somebody that's doing citizen engagement, we have somebody that's, I mean, it's the same thing, over and over and over and over, frankly. And we have so much being missed in this city, that I would think that if we were going to support additional positions with the finite dollars that we have, we wouldn't be making sure that there was purpose behind that spending, that's all I have.
Can I add something, please? This is important.
It's your show.
Councilmember Fitzley.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So your labor relations, the labor relations officer is in, and that's Elizabeth, right?
Correct.
Ms. Leary, and she also is the personnel director?
Right, that position is budgeted in our office, but she's doing that role as HR director as well.
So I thought I...
That's part of the charter.
Well, no, I know, but I think I was watching it before it cut off, when she, when Ms. Leary had her, so her position as director is not budgeted in HR's budget, because I thought that's what I heard when she came here, because someone asked her if she got a raise, and she said yes. So is her dollars budgeted in HR, or are her dollars budgeted where you guys are? I'm just, and I just asked for clarification.
My understanding is that the chief labor negotiator position is budgeted through the mayor's office, is budgeted in the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Jane.
Council, you know, it's so important, I know, I hear you, the mayor's staff works very diligently and very hard to make sure that we provide excellent services to our community. One other thing that Mark did not mention is that he also worked with the mayor as it relates to legislative issues, which is very important, that's very key. He also works to help put together our proposals whenever we send them to our legislators, this is something that he works together with all the departments, and it brings, it can bring in many dollars. Now, I work very closely with Mr. Lawrence, I keep saying Mark, but, and also the other thing that he does is, in the event that I am unable to be here, then he acts on my behalf, he has to step in, and so we have to make sure that the two of us work very closely together and keep each other informed, and make sure that we keep the motion going. So please, council, know that our staff, as I look at the budget, as I was, when I first started, I was one of the first things that I worked on, and now it's Mark that's doing this, very little change has been made as it relates to staff, our work responsibilities have somewhat increased. Our work responsibilities have somewhat increased. With all due respect, Councilwoman Hussein, we have been working on the structural deficit, I mean, since day one, since I walked in here. I know Shelby wasn't here before then. There was another person that we were working with, together with our finance director. We are looking at different actions to make sure that we do, and we're working with our finance director to make sure that this is brought for you. We hope within the next few weeks, it's up to the mayor, obviously, that we're able to come up with a, well, we have some ideas, some recommendations. I think our budget is a lot more stable than what we initially projected to the city council. So please know that we will present a structural deficit plan to the city council very, very soon. And it's not something that we're just looking at right now. I can assure you, since I've been here, and it's been over a little, over a year now, I've been working together with our finance director and with our chief strategy officer, deputy mayor, as well. And I'm hoping that when we do present this to you, that is one that is sound, well-thought-out, and addresses not just the needs for today, but also for tomorrow, which is why it's taking us a little time. We want to make sure that we get that together. Thank you.
I have Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Jeffrey, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you all for being here. To Councilwoman Hussein's point about, it seems a redundancy. We're in the community quite a bit and hear the concerns. Is there relating to government transparency, where, you know, we have citizen advocate, we have community engagement, we have all of these different roles. But a lot of comments that are made is, you know, who, where, in the community, where is the who's being where? If everyone, we have all these different jobs to the tune of probably about $300,000 or $400,000 for community engagement as far as salaries, there's no calendar, you know, we've heard that it was supposed to be a calendar where the mayor is represented, the engagement there, the citizen advocate is to all these different events. It's just a random, what we've heard is Facebook posts here and there. So the citizens are concerned that they see Luciana, you know, places, as well as yourself here and there. But really, all of these different positions, taxpayer dollars, there's really no transparency of, you know, what's really happening, what's the outcome in the result. If, you know, Mr. Lawrence is a citizen advocate, what outcomes have been achieved as, you know, trying to result in that? Through 3-1-1, we've heard, you know, it's 30,000 calls. Well, are those calls being resolved by that additional staff? Or is it Department of Neighborhoods and Citizens Engagement, which has been added over the last, you know, few years or so? Or is it the citizen advocate? So it's a lot of, everyone has titles and positions and a lot of funding going out, but no one is really able to pigeonhole exactly what is being accomplished or achieved, and what productivity is, you know, really accomplished in the community in which we say that we serve.
Well, I know it's more of a comment than it is a question, but sometimes when we're looking at an issue that a resident brings to our attention, it may involve all of us sometimes, in order to be able to address it. It's not just one person. We make sure that we work closely with 3-1-1 to help get them the answer. I know that Mr. Lawrence meets with residents sometimes, and they don't necessarily call 3-1-1. They just come up to our office and they ask questions. And those are things that you don't, no one sees. And there are times when there are people that just call, and they want some answers from us. They don't necessarily call 3-1-1. We don't turn them down just because they're not following the 3-1-1. We deal with the residents and try to get some information. I know that perhaps one of the things that we could do, and we're starting to, we're working on that right now. We do have the information, and that's to maybe put some of this down in paper, so that you can see the numerous times that we've spent. I've spent many times talking to residents, you know that. I've spent, and I know that Mr. Lawrence has as well. Again, we're not all there 24/7 in city council, but I can assure you that we meet with our folks. And obviously, I do attend many functions as well myself.
Go ahead and follow up, and then we have Councilmember Garza and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. And I do know that, as you said, you know, that you assure us, but it's really about, the constituents need assurance through transparency and actually, you know, this is what was achieved. If you are going to events, I personally haven't seen any reports as far as community engagement of what's being heard, what outcomes are, what changes are being made, you know. That's what the citizens are looking for, for that type of investment with taxpayer dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garza, or Vice President Garza, and then Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. I think Adam laid it out pretty well. I do have a little bit of a follow-up, however. And with all due respect to you guys, I really appreciate you guys being here. I know you get some really tough answers. You guys get grilled. However, you know, number two, since there's no changes in services in your department. Well, obviously, there's been a lot of changes to the titles. Chief Strategy Officer slash Financial Health Team Shelby Freire, she left last year abruptly. Now they hired her back, so I don't know who took over her position. But then when she came back, you know, our departments for the, oh, geez, I can't think of it. Brian McGrane's position, he left, he abruptly left as well, no two weeks' notice. So she took over his position as interim director. And I heard you say that, you know, you may not be here, and Mark Lawrence will stand in for you, whatever, for the deputy chief of staff, Mark Lawrence. However, this is like the third time I've seen Mark this year. Once was in the parking garage, once was at Linda Sanchez's retirement, and now today. We're out in the community all the time. And I know that's part of one of your titles. And Jane, I, you know, it strikes me a little odd when you keep hearing you say "our community." You know, you live an hour and a half away, and you've been here for over a year. And I've asked you if you plan on living here. You said you don't know, you're not sure, it doesn't sound like you were. And I don't mean it as an attack, but when you say "our community," and you can't be here, so then Mark will step in for you, I find that a problem. You know, I mean, it's our tax dollars that are funding your positions, and you're not even living in the community you're supposed to be representing.
That would be illegal, Councilman.
What's that?
Residency requirements for public employment.
Yeah, I get that. I'm not saying that she's required, but he, the mayor, could have hired somebody that lived within our community to take that kind of money.
You know, Councilman, I am very proud to tell you that I have 30-plus years' experience working in local government. I have been a city manager of more than four communities. I have been a deputy mayor of one of the largest cities here in the great state of Michigan. I'm very proud of serving this community. So for me, I can tell you that whichever city that I represent, I consider it to be my community. I may not always live there, but it's still part of my city. It's still part of my, it's part of my work. That's how I see myself. That's how I see whenever I talk to the residents of our community. Obviously, living here, that's important to you. Unfortunately for me, it's not something that I can do right the second. But I can assure you that I do consider this to be part of my city. I'm very proud to be representing the city whenever I do get to have that opportunity. And I'm very proud to see that many residents are starting to recognize me. They feel at ease whenever they call me. As a city manager, I can assure you that my role, it's not just one city. I've worked for a total of nine communities, Councilwoman, in three different states. And I can tell you that when I go back, I can, people recognize me, and they know me, and they know my passion for local government. I've worked for one of the largest cities in the United States.
I understand that, Jane. I've seen your resume, and I thought, back when I seen it, I seen all the different job titles you've had over the last decade. And it's been quite a few. So that was concerning to me to begin with. You know, usually, if you're doing really good at your job, they keep, they try to retain you.
Your honor, that's not the way, that's not the way my job works.
Please don't cut me off. I'm talking.
I apologize. Go ahead.
You talked about being a city manager. You were a city manager in Pontiac, correct?
I was the deputy mayor for the city of Pontiac.
Okay, and that's when they lost their fire department?
No, sir.
It's not?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, well then.
If I can just clarify that, please. I went to help with, I went to help the city of Pontiac to come out of receivership. And I was able to do that within less than a year and a half. I'm very proud of that work with the city of Pontiac. They were in receivership. The state, the state transition board, they appointed me as the deputy mayor. So did the city council, so did the mayor. And I helped them to bring, to come out of that issue. And so now the city of Pontiac, they have more than $30 million in their fund balance. They're doing very well, sir. And I'm very proud of that work there. Very proud.
Now you're here, and we're not doing so well. And it's not because of you. We have money from ARPA, but that money's going to be gone. And we're going to be in a structural deficit come 2024.
But all cities are going through all kinds of financial issues right now.
I'm not worried about all those cities.
I know, sir, but I don't want it to seem like we're. The ARPA funds are used primarily for one-time use.
I understand.
We don't use them to fund programs or positions that are on a continual basis. I know that the mayor and the finance director are working very closely together to make sure, and the departments, that our city runs in an effective, productive manner. As a matter of fact, I am working with various departments right now to look at operations, to see how we can improve that. And that's part of being a city manager, where I do work with communities to help improve operations.
So I thought that was part of the chief strategy officer.
The chief strategy officer does that as well, sir.
So.
And that's her primary role.
Is there a reason why our chief strategy officer slash deputy mayor slash financial health team member Shelby Freire isn't here this evening?
This is our staff. This is who put the budget together. Many of the questions that you're asking right now deals primarily with operations and not the budget, with all due respect. We are here to answer questions about the budget. Mr. Lawrence, our deputy chief of staff, is prepared to do that, to answer questions about the budget, not about operations and management. I believe that is the role of the mayor. He decides how he's going to manage his department. He decides who he wants to fill in those positions. Thank you.
That's all I have.
I have Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Cost.
Thank you. I just have a couple other questions that I heard. So one of the things I think, oh, Scott Bean's, the money for Scott Bean's salary, is that out of the mayor's budget, or is that out of a different budget?
IT.
It's out of IT's budget. But, so, does that, thank you for that. So then he's not part of the eight then? Because his, so he's not part of the eight because his money comes out of IT. So then, you mentioned that the ARPA dollars are one-time use. But, and I agree with that. But, you know, the ARPA dollars are used to plug our structural deficit. So that's a one-time use to plug our structural deficit, but it doesn't address our structural deficit. It just kicks it down the road. And I'm glad that you guys are working on a plan to address the deficit. For me, as a council member, it's a little disappointing, because that plan comes after budget. And so I don't know if that is something that council votes on. I don't know if it involves moving of money. I don't know if that's something that council gets to comment on. And so that's a little disappointing to me, is that the plan comes after we approve the budget. The other thing is, I got two questions. Is Shelby full-time with the city of Lansing?
Yes.
And then the other thing is, the CSO is supposed to meet with council at least once a year. Is it quarterly? And that hasn't happened. And so for us, I think we would have had a lot less questions today if the CS, the chief strategy officer would meet with us on a regular basis. So I would ask that you implement that again. And I think that that, for me, that would address a lot of the questions I have about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Just real quick, because I know Mr. Cost has a question, just so we're clear. Scott Bean, when we got our mayoral information and staff salary document, which was just a few weeks ago, Scott Bean is on there. He had a start date of 11/15/2021, salary of $90,000 or 43.27. So he is part of the mayoral staff and the mayoral staff's budget.
The reason why I mentioned that, and I asked the question, is when IT was here, he mentioned that his money came out of the IT budget. So I just wanted that to be on the record. Thank you.
Then their own documentation and information is conflicted.
Okay, Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here. So I heard you talk, Jane, talk about talking to residents, dealing with residents. Did you deal with a resident today?
Not today.
When was the last time you dealt with a resident?
I would say probably sometime last week, working on some questions. Sometimes residents come into city hall, and they can be random. They ask me questions or whatever.
Do you help residents on the weekend?
I think in the past, there may have been, may have been an issue where I've needed to come in on the weekend. I don't recall the incident right now, but if the need arises, I'm here, yes.
The reason I ask this is because the proposed budget shows close to $1 million in that office in pay. And I firmly believe that we all should work for the pay. I'm answering phone calls on the weekends. I'm going and finding people's shelter on the weekends. I'm working 24/7. I'm going to bed at 1:00 in the morning, working a day job, and doing the city council job. So it's a little concerning that you had to think back the last time you helped a resident. I'm helping three residents right now as I'm sitting in this meeting. So I think it's been said pretty well already that I don't see our bang for our buck here in this budget with reaching out to citizens. In fact, I get a lot of phone calls that they've already tried the mayor's office and couldn't get anyone. It ended in a dead end. You know, the other frustrating part is, you said you worked for nine communities and in three different states in four cities. You come here and you respond, "I'm not prepared to answer that," constantly. Every meeting, we have questions that we do not get answered. And I'm just not seeing where our value is, and I'm not prepared to answer that every time we ask a question.
Is that a question, Your Honor? What is your question?
My question is, is if you're doing all of these things, I guess I don't know how, how is it possible that you're doing all these things that we've heard you're doing? Because I'm not hearing that from the public, like everyone else has said. And you've got this resume that you talked about, you're very proud of, but you sit there and you say, "I'm not prepared to answer that. I don't know the question, but I'll get back to you."
There are times, Your Honor, when I have to come in and represent a department head. And I do that, I think, very well. Unfortunately, I may not know the intricacies of that. I do not wish to give you a false answer. I prefer to come back with a correct answer. I've always given an answer. I may not have come back, I don't know of an opportunity when I've been able to speak up about the question, but I do it in writing, or I may have sent it to a council member, or I may have sent it to the council president in the past. So as far as me not knowing everything, again, with all due respect, I'm still fairly new myself, not to say, not to give that as an excuse.
If I was new, I wouldn't be sitting there on my phone the entire committee of the whole meeting and council meeting.
On my phone?
Yes. We sit here and we see you doing it. And I find it highly inappropriate and disrespectful to every member that's sitting up here and the voters.
Well, with all due respect, sometimes I'm researching a question that you're looking at, that you're asking, or I'm looking at some reports that I can take a look at in my.
If you're doing research, then why aren't we getting answers then?
Because I don't necessarily have the, all of the information, but I am trying. I am trying to get some answers. So, and that's what I try to do sometimes. But I keep my phone here sometimes, because there may be a need for somebody to communicate with me for whatever reason. I check very clearly. I don't leave my office until I look at every single email. I do my best to respond to them as quickly as I can.
Yeah, I've got nothing further.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to remind folks at the table that, you know, there was a comment about the plan coming after the budget. And that is concerning, frankly. But I also want to remind folks that we can come up with a plan. Now, that plan has to withstand mayoral veto. But should we have supermajority, you know, consensus essentially on this body, we can come up with a plan. We can approve a plan, and we can start this work right now. We don't have to wait. That's the first piece. Second of all, I don't want any of you to take anything I've said personally. What I want you to understand is that as we look line by line through this budget, we have got to be able to account for every single dollar spent. And since there are questions, we have to ask them. When, let me ask you a real quick question. In terms of your temp help, $118,000, because we've heard of all the different positions that we have within that office, the work that we're getting from each one of those positions, what are we getting with the, I mean, talk to me a little bit about the temp help.
The temporary help line pays for, in part, our interns. The mayor and I especially believe very strongly that it's important to have students in our office, learning how a city runs, learning how an office runs. in our office, learning how a city runs, learning how an office runs, learning what decisions come in through the door and how those are handled. And that's very important to both him and I, as I got my start in public service as an intern, so...
So that's exclusively interns?
I don't know if it's exclusively interns or not, but it's largely interns.
Okay. And then the other, and I will say this, and this isn't, I hope you never take professional criticism as personal, okay? And the reason why I'm saying that is I heard something up here at this dais about this could be potentially getting personal. I think what I'm hearing is professional criticism. Here's what I don't want. If I continue to support a personnel line item that allows for this number of positions within that office, I appreciate you working hard, but we need to work smart and hard, correct? And I'm struggling, as an example, when I get screamed at, which happened just last week by a resident, because they have yet to have an appointment scheduled with the mayor, when I gave that to the scheduler several weeks ago. And so I had to actually circle back. I mean, if that's the one sole job, and I actually had to remind folks that we have, all elected officials have 112,000 bosses in the city, and if somebody reaches out, we better be bending over backwards to make sure that we are taking care of the issue. If they want to doggone sit down with the mayor, if that's what they're asking for, they should get it. And so when I refer that over, I'm trusting, because we have one individual, that that's their sole focus, that they've actually done that, and if there's some reason that they couldn't do that, that they're circling back, right? I shouldn't be getting yelled and screamed at, right? Because people don't understand that, right? They don't see everything behind the curtain, don't necessarily understand all the knobs and levers that have to be pulled. And so that's our job to make sure that those things are done effectively and efficiently. So I struggle with that. And that's just one example among many, frankly. I'm also struggling, I believe that position, as an example, takes a look at appointments to boards and to commissions and looks at dates and things like that. We, I cannot tell you how many inaccuracies and issues we've had with that part of the position. And again, I'm just talking about what we're expecting, the duties from those positions, and the mess we're having to clean up. We have a skeleton crew in City Council, a skeleton crew, and they are catching so much right before it actually hits our packets that they shouldn't be having to catch, frankly, not with the number of staff members that you have and not with the work that they should be doing. When I, if we have faith-based and we have a citizen advocate and we have a Department of Neighbors and Citizen Engagement, I'm going to be frank, I don't ever want to be told as a council member again that I should have called 311, or I should have put something in the Lansing Connect if it's a constituent issue. Not, I could understand if we had one position, but with all those positions and all those people doing that work and everything else getting routed to 311, if something is made it to my desk, it's because they, trust me, they've done all that. 99% of the time, they have done all of that. And so I find it highly offensive as elected official, when we're supporting year in and year out, all of this, and our budget, that somebody literally picks up their phone and says, "Did you call 311?" "What, did you?" I've had to ask the mayor that. "Did you call 311?" When somebody brings an issue to you? So I guess this is, this is a long way of saying, if we don't start to see some changes in the level of service, we have no choice but to cut this. And frankly, I mean, we're going to need to anyways, right? It's going to have to be a shared sacrifice. But I just, I would be absolutely remiss if I hadn't said some of those things, because frankly, we've been saying them, and you know we have. We've been saying them, and saying them, and saying them behind the curtain, and at some point, you got to make the invisible visible for change.
I just have one comment, and then we're going to move on to the community media piece. And that is, those of you that are on the dais that remember when we, as a council, decided to have a chief strategy officer was not part of the mayorial budget. And we actually found money, including taking money from our own department to help fund that position. We created an ordinance to reflect what we wanted to see done. I would expect and hope that that's what Ms. Freyer would be doing, period. We are not to a place where we have looked at all the redundancies, where we've looked at, you know, shoring up our budget. Those things are still out there. And to have, which even though she's a talented person, to be hopping from place to place doing other things is not advantageous to what we had decided when we created this position. So having said that, that takes us to Mr. Cochran. Since we've seen you recently, I'm sure that this will go rather fast.
And I think I've answered many questions over email, and I'm happy to discuss the options that we were talking about. Real quick, just on our little piece of the budget regarding the seven questions.
Yes.
Number one, the main difference in this year's budget was actually that final trailing is under the fixed benefits portion is the largest change, and that's the kind of trailing indicator of when we converted our contract positions to actual city employees. Now that that happened, you know, at least one full fiscal year, that number has gone up, and it's the only major change. Number two, no. Number three, no. Major equipment purchases, we will be, again, I've marveled before this body before at how it reinforces my faith in people that we have this equipment for people to borrow and use, like an equipment library of technology, and we've had no issues with theft or damage. That equipment is now like 10 years old, so we're talking about upgrading or just updating some of that stuff. Number five, no. And number six and seven are no for us.
Are there any questions for community media?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Dom.
Seeing none, we want to thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that takes us to the city clerk. Good evening, sir.
So I will dive right into the questions that have been provided ahead. In terms of the difference between last year's budget and this year's proposed budget, we do have an increase of a little over 40,000 of just salary and benefits changes. And then we do also have a $200,000 expense line for the presidential primary that is currently slated to be February 27, 2024. I would note that there's a corresponding income item for that because the state does reimburse the, most of the expenses for the presidential primary. They don't reimburse salaries, so we lose some staff time and other things, but they do reimburse all of the direct costs as well as overtime and non-permanent staff. Number two, changes in service. Yes, there are a number of things that due to Proposal Two of 2022, and President Wood, I think we've discussed me making a more full presentation of that later, but I'll just highlight a couple of things, that there will be nine days of early voting for each state and federal election. We're also trying to implement that for the city election. The state is not certain we'll be able to do that for August, but we're all hoping for November to be able to implement that. So the voters will be able to turn their ballot, they'll be able to come in person and put their ballot right into a machine for nine days of early voting. We also, voters will now have the option to be on a, what's going to be called, I think, a permanent ballot list, where instead of having to be sent an application, send the application back, and then we send them a ballot, and then they send the ballot back, there will be a permanent ballot list where we just send them a ballot for every election. So that's a service change we'll be implementing. I do also want to note that the constitutional amendment also requires the state to pay the return postage, both on absentee ballot applications and absentee ballots. At the time of preparing this budget, it was looking like the state is, was going to pay those costs directly. It's looking more like at least for a little bit longer, probably through the end of this year, it may be a reimbursement, so we may need to add an expense and an income to account for that. Since I don't know that they're going to be quite ready to implement. Additionally, we've had drop boxes. The new constitutional amendment requires those to be state-funded, so we're still trying to assess the level of service and what will be provided by the state. I also do want to note that one thing that could change services that is not enacted yet but is being talked about at the state level is moving the August primary date to earlier in the year, perhaps in May. If that does happen in 2024, that will add an additional election in the fiscal year that's being discussed, and so I will be coming back for a budget amendment to accommodate that, just to give you a heads up on that. Question three, we did not propose any rate increases. Question four, we are, the first five years of equipment maintenance fees for our tabulators in the precincts was covered by the purchase contract that was funded by the state. We are responsible for those ongoing maintenance fees, and those are $56,000 some dollars a year. We also have the laptops that we use in the precincts, and we want to keep them refreshed, so we are trying to do about 20% a year, so we have $20,000 set aside for that. And then the state has promised us that they will not pay for the next election equipment system, so we are beginning to set aside for that expected purchase, probably in fiscal year '27 or '28, although there has been some discussion of pushing the date back because of implementation of Proposal Two and the various things, so those are our capital items. And then we are not proposing eliminating or combining any positions. We traditionally have contracted seasonal workers for elections. You know, we were a fairly small staff, and to handle the absentee ballots and all that, we've, since before I was clerk, had people who worked for five or six weeks before and right after an election to help bridge that gap. I would also note, I had my staff look at the hours of election workers, and, you know, we're a small staff, but the, we're also the largest staff in the city because we have about 500 election workers. And between three, two to three election days in the past two fiscal years, that's been the equivalent hours of between five and a half and six and a half year-round employees, basically on two to three days. So just to give you a sense of the scale of what we do. And then six and seven, we did not get any ARPA funding, so we don't have any ARPA carryovers.
Emily?
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Chris? I see none. You're gone. Okay. At this time, part of our process that we have done for a number of years have been to invite union representatives to come up and to discuss the budget with us. So all of those that are here from the unions, if you'd please come up and take into the well and take a seat. Might need some extra chairs. There's a couple over behind Jane. Okay, we want to welcome you here, and the first thing that we'd like to do is if you could please give us your name and the union group that you represent, and then I'm not sure who's going to go first, but we'll leave it up to you guys to work it out. So start with Dan.
My name's Dan Calm, I'm president of Lansing Firefighters, Local 421.
Ryan Wilcox, I'm the supervisor president for LPD.
Dennis Parker, UAW, Local 2256.
Jason Pong, non-supervisor president for LPD.
Don't all rush to the...
Yes.
I think starting out...
I think it'd be easier. I think you guys have questions, and then maybe we can fill in the gaps as we go.
Okay.
Do you have anything, I guess?
I've got Council, Vice President Garza, then Councilmember Jackson.
All right, thank you, Council President. No questions for me, I just have, I guess, a statement. You know, as we sit here, we listen to all the different departments come through, I think everybody laid out their plan as good as, best they could, and I do think that we need to start taking a look at reducing the different operating expenses for the different departments. However, I think the public spoke loud and clear, passed in the public safety millage, and they want to make sure that police and fire are fully funded. So I'm not supportive of reducing the budget by any means, and when we talk to the fire department, they are in desperate need of paramedics, talk to the police, we don't have the CSOs out there, they're not having enough time to get out to the neighborhoods when there's speeding occurring. For instance, Pennsylvania's closed down. I'm sure you guys have been getting lots of calls regarding the speeding that's going on between Pennsylvania and Cedar. So I know you guys have a lot of, lot of serious issues, public service, you know, we need new street sweepers, I mean, you name it. Infrastructure's just been kind of left to decay, and so I am not supportive of taking any, or reducing any of your guys' departments. I just want to say, appreciate you guys being here, and, oh, and actually, I'm making an amendment to the budget, to this year's budget for the interest that we received for ARPA funds. Instead of it going back to the general budget, I want to, the general fund, I'd like to see it go to as many $5,000 sign-on bonuses as we possibly can, so we can fill these positions that's been unfilled for quite some time. That's all I have to say.
So on that, I guess it does, and I know fire and public services, we're all in the same boat. We can't, we can't get fully staffed. So I appreciate the extra money being put out there and hopefully allocated to help do that. And I think some of the issue is, I don't even know if our current numbers are even sufficient because we haven't been fully staffed in years. And it does, some of the services do take a backseat because we don't have the personnel to fill all the spots, so I don't know what the answer is to get them filled on both sides, or all three, all three of our sides, I should say, I'm sorry.
Anything that wanted to add to Councilmember or Vice President Garza's comment before I go to Councilmember Jackson?
I think, just very quickly, if I can add on, when we look at the $5,000, I'm wondering, I mean, frankly, with the cost of, as an example, a mortgage, I don't know how much $5,000 really serves as an incentive. And so I really still feel like we haven't gotten good answers in terms of how successful the program's been, you know, what are the numbers in terms of utilization? I would be interested if we did have additional dollars, looking at potentially increasing the dollar amount to try to capture more applicants, because I'm just not certain that year in and year out, we're actually using that line item, and that it's, you understand what I'm saying?
Go ahead.
As a follow-up to that, and I understand that, but when, you know, when we had the different departments down here, and we hear that Kalamazoo's offering a $15,000 sign-on bonus, and other municipalities, in order for them to come here, our pay is maybe equivalent to other municipalities, but they're not doing the 30,000 run call volume as Murnee Township for instance, so why, why would they come here and, you know, do twice as much as work for the same amount of money? So having a sign-on bonus, in my opinion, would be a good way to attract them and retain them.
And you know what happened? I misheard you. I thought you were talking about the city's, the city's down payment assistance. I apologize.
Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Spitzley.
Can I just follow up really quick? I'm sorry, Brian, on that. The problem with the down payment assistance, I apologize, is when you're doing this, and that was one of the follow-ups I had, is, you know... is when you're doing this, and, and that was one of the follow-ups I had is, you know, I don't know if when, you know, that's, you know, when you have the job description and you post the job, I don't know if the benefits, like the down payment assistance and stuff like that, is included, and so when you're trying to get the best, and your chief, Chief Sturd event, and your chief were, I was very relieved when they, when they said they're not going to just take anybody, they want to take, you know, those who are qualified and, and you know, and all that, and that sounds very good, but, you know, we need to do a better job than of advertising what we bring to the table, the five thousand dollar signing bonus, I think is good, and I agree, when we're, we don't, you know, we get, you know, almost double, sometimes three times the calls as other communities other than Detroit, why would, why would I come here? So, I, I agree that we need to have something to entice folks to come and, and work in this great city, but we also need to do a better job of, of advertising the tuition, the, the homeowner down payment, because I think with the five thousand dollars and the homeowner down payment, that's a great incentive for someone to come, want to come, you know, and, you know, we know that, you know, you guys on the fire department are the best, ha ha, but, but that you, but, but that you, and you pay well, so, you know, that little bit may be the, the part that tips the scale, so we, we really have to do a better job of advertising that as well. I apologize, Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Jackson, I will get to you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, finish the thought, I think that's a good idea, because of course, I'm going a little bit in a different direction. So, union representatives, right? Does your union make political contributions to any elected officials?
To my knowledge, all the unions have a PAC.
Okay.
None of our union dues can be given out for political endorsements, so our, our union dues, you have to give to the Political Action Committee, that's a whole separate thing, it doesn't come out of our monthly dues.
But it's your, your union will, can make an endorsement and give an amount of money, right?
Only through the PAC money, and we don't, the City of Lansing firefighters don't have their own PAC, it's through the State of Michigan, so we have to petition the State of Michigan's firefighter union to give us money to give to candidates.
Did you give to the mayor or any of us?
Our local did not donate any money, that I'm aware of, as long as I've been the president.
How about the state PAC?
The state PAC did, I can't tell you when the mayor ran the first time, I wasn't in office then, I don't know how much, if at all.
How about LPD?
We endorse, I'm not positive about money, what we've, what we've done in the past, nothing comes to mind right now, but I, if somebody had something from the past, I wouldn't be surprised either, but we endorse all the time, yes.
We have also.
Okay, is it like, so, I mean, I assume since we're locals, like people up here and, or the mayor, probably, right? Okay, are you guys the people that's at the table on the bargaining conversations?
Can you put your mic a little closer, I'm having...
Sorry, thank you, I just asked, are you the people that's at the table in the bargaining? Because this is, we always, I always, I never hear anything, I just hear it, and I'm not going to say what's discussed in closed session, but generally, we pass collective bargaining, and that's the only time I hear about it, so I'm always interested in how all that goes. So, is the mayor at the table, or you just go through the chief, Elizabeth O'Leary?
Elizabeth.
Okay, all right.
Our chief is there.
Thank you, and how close do you work with the Board of Commissioners, the LPD Board of Commissioners?
Myself personally?
Yeah, are you the, I'm sorry?
I'm the, the union president, but as far as the union and the Board of Commissioners, we really don't have any interaction with them as the union themselves.
It's just because we had conversation about, you know, raising a, a signing bonus, which I frankly kind of support on the notion of it, but it's always like, oh, we can't talk about any of that, because it goes through collective bargaining and this, this thing, and then, you know, your PAC through the state, you know, endorses us, or the mayor, and pays, and then, we just never know anything, and I always just hear about it, but all of these decisions always have such a long-term effect on the city, you know, from years prior before you guys were on board and all that, it's just the different things that's actually decided on, it just kind of runs through us, or at least through me, at the last minute, it's just has such an effect, so I always just wonder how all those are really made, and Elizabeth O'Leary tells us a little bit about it, but any insight you guys have, because I know you guys represent your people, so you're not going to want to make concessions as much on different things, especially things that have the biggest impact, and you also, it's just like, you know, endorse people, so, it's just a tough situation for someone on the outside looking in.
Wages and benefits all have to deal with the union side of things, so as far as bonuses, signing bonuses, however you want to classify it, I guess, yes, we would have a hand in it, but it just depends on both sides and how, how fast we can come to agreements, I mean, some are quick and some are really long, I mean, it's just, it's all part of, unfortunately, the, the talks that we have to go through, and, I mean, as far as the Police Board of Commissioners, I guess I, I'm confused on that, on, on where the connect is there, but we work with Elizabeth all the time to work through many different things, some things can be done in a couple hours, some things take years.
And I, I believe all the unions, I, I know all the unions have come to the city's aid in recessionary times, you know, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, when we're on furlough days, ten percent pay cuts, all of that, we've always come to the table in the, in time of the city's needs.
Okay, thank you guys, those are my questions.
Councilmember, or Vice President Garza, did I see your hand, Councilmembers? Okay.
Thank you, I just wanted to follow up, I heard what you said about, you know, taking pay cuts and stuff, and, and there's been a handful of us on council when, just staying in solidarity with the unions, when there was furlough days that we took ten percent of our pay and gave back to the city, so I know I was one of them that did that as well, so, I think we all try to move forward in a solid front to help do what's best for the city of Lansing.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Hussein?
Yes, I get, it's, it's, it's always fascinating to me when we get out on the front lines and we talk to, to our, what, what I believe to be the most important people in the city in terms of employees, right, and those are the folks that are working in the trenches day in and day out, and it's, it's fascinating to, to listen to them in terms of the ideas that they have, the, and of course, right, because they're out there actually doing the work each and every day, and they're not, you know, legislating or budgeting, or, you know, being an administrator from the tenth, ninth floor, whatever, and so, I, I feel like obviously you all are their voice. I'm, I'm curious, what is your respective roles when you actually put together budgets as an example for the LFD or for the LPD, and you think about the things that you can actually control, outside of CBA, outside of, so we're looking at programming, we're looking at capital expenditures, we're looking at, what, what are your respective roles? Are you, are you listened to, are you part of the process? No, if you guys could just go down the line and tell me what that looks like?
As far as the firefighter union, we're not involved with the budget at all. I would like to say this, I appreciate the ARPA money, buying the vehicles, paying the garage, giving us new vehicles that we desperately needed, but, one, one thing that needs to be addressed is a long-term replacement plan. We're going to run out of money again, those things are expensive, and we need them to do our job to provide the safety to the citizens of the city. So somebody's got to start planning, putting a little money away every year so that we can replace the things we need to do our jobs, whether it's a snowplow, a police car, or a fire truck, there has to be something built into our budget. I know budgets are tight, I get it, times aren't great, but these things are things we have to have to provide safety for the citizens, and if we don't plan ahead, we're going to be in the same boat, when this ARPA money's all gone and we get all these vehicles that we purchased, we're going to start needing new ones, and we won't have the money again. So, as far as budget goes, that's my biggest concern right now. I appreciate this council approving our TA unanimously last meeting, I appreciate the work that the city negotiator, Elizabeth, and the city did through negotiations, but we got to start looking at the future, and honestly, the fire department needs to expand. Somehow, some way, we need to get bigger, and I'll tell you, we're down twenty percent personnel, and we're fifth, or a hundred percent increase in runs in the last fifteen years. We can't sustain this, our people are working their tails off every day, every day they're at work, they're working hard, and we're going to break, and sooner or later, and all of us are in the same boat, everybody's putting in overtime, everybody's working, trying to provide that level of service, and we all need people, and we got to figure something out. I don't, I'm not a budget guy, I understand, but we have to start planning for the future instead of just making it every year, just getting by. Equipment costs, EMS equipments, I believe is thirty percent increase last year from the year before, I'm sure it's going to go up again, fuel costs are up, and we got a flat-line budget other than personnel costs, I don't know how we're going to do it, it's not going to work, we got to start thinking about the future, so, I, I just want to get that out there, I appreciate the council having us in today, and I'll let the, these guys answer the original question.
Dan, if I could just come back to you real quick, but, I, I get that you're not a budget guy, but that's, that's exactly why I asked the question, because if we're going to do this the right way moving forward, we need you and the budget folks at the table, and we need to know exactly what it is we need to do, and we need to, the folks that do understand that piece, they need to operationalize what you're telling them has to happen, in order to continue to provide the level of service that you all have done a great job with historically, but of course it's getting more difficult, more, we, we see the, the number of calls, we, we've seen the volume historically, and we know what you guys are dealing with, and it's, you guys are doing a tremendous job, we agree. I just, I, I really wanted to get at, are you a part of that process, and it sounds like the answer is no.
We are not.
Yeah, go start.
So, as far as the union itself on the police side, the, the union really doesn't have a hand in putting together our budget anywhere? I'm a little hesitant on answering the second part of it, I do have a large role in many different budgets of the police department, putting it together, and I, I don't think any of us would argue with what Dan just said, I mean, like I mentioned before, I mean, we haven't been fully staffed in years, and there is breaking points, and I think a lot of us, and especially the officers on the road, are at them now and dealing with it. But I know in the budgets that I do put together, it is very difficult to balance replacing everything, and then just being able to function on a day-to-day basis, and especially when you put together a budget and you think it's like, status quo, and going to probably get it through, and it gets shot back down within our own depart, from our own department heads of, we just don't have the money, and we all get it, we've done, we've done the negotiations, we've done, you know, furloughs, all the other things to make things work, and I, I get it, we get it, but it's just, it's hard, and we're not the only one, we're not the only city that does it, but, it's not easy doing the budget side of it, it really isn't,
As far as budgeting and, and controlling the numbers, no, I don't necessarily have an issue in that. Now, I will tell you what you're saying about the frontline guys and the ideas they have, we do, I do communicate that up to the administration, and, you know, and, and tweaks and operational efficiencies and stuff, so, that would be our impact in the budget, so.
Is, is there, I hate to put you down the spot, is there an efficiency that you believe we could be doing that we're not, that you have actually articulated to the administration?
There's been a few, some of them changed, you know, the big one is our trash, trash right now, we should be doing the whole city, so, and making, making the, the revenue of that, so.
I have no involvement in the budget.
All right, and I appreciate that. The other one isn't as big of a deal, but Dennis, I want to ask you, just because we're getting all kinds of different information, this might not seem like a big-ticket item, but it's a big-ticket item, for those of us that are out in the neighborhood, it's just about every night of the week. With regards to stumps, I just want to know, do we have equipment, and if we have equipment, is it operational? Okay, that's the first piece, and then if we were actually going to, because I know we have, we, we've done this at one point, right, historically, what would, what would that look like in terms of manpower, in terms of cost on annual basis, what are we looking at?
So yes, we do have equipment, it is operational. Manpower and cost, it depends on what level of service...
And I guess I'm, if we were going to keep that in-house, is that a two-man crew, is that a three-man crew, is that year-round, is that seasonal, I mean, what, what is that?
Again, there's, it would depend on what level of service you wanted to provide, if your goal was just to grind the stumps, let the homeowner deal with the chips and fill the hole, that's obviously going to be the cheapest way to do it. Now, if you want us to haul the chips out, backfill with topsoil, and then seed grass back on it, that's, that's another, another large, or, you know, that, that increases the cost quite a bit, because you're talking more equipment, more vehicles, and obviously, somebody's got to get the vehicles to the site, so.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so next we have Councilman Brown, and then Councilwoman Patricia Spitzley.
Thank you Vice President Garza, and to your point on some things as well as you, Dan, I was in support of what both of you are saying, and as well as, how do we continue to, to look at the equipment and keep it funded and have a strategic plan? But I was down here having lunch the other day, and there was two young gentlemen who just started for the fire department, I was so excited, I said, oh, great, you know, I'm Jeff, what, you know, what's your name, and, you know, who you're working with? And they said, oh, not in Lansing, and they laughed almost, and they said, because we're working, I won't say what local area it is, but it was like fifteen or twenty percent of the workload with the same pay, and I got to talk to them for about twenty or thirty minutes, and I said, could you just share with me honestly, I told them who I was, and they, and what you're saying, I mean, you guys are being very nice with it, but we really have to have incentive, because people have families, you have so much work-life that you have, you know, as far as, you know, twenty-five years or whatever, and how much wear and tear you're putting on your body and the culture and everything, and they were like, we would love to, and we're, these particular individuals said that they are from Lansing, and they would love to serve in the fire in their community, but it's not even close to possible, so I just wanted to share that on the record as well, and thank you for all your service.
Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Dennis, so, you get stumps, I get street sweeping, so, so I know that we do it, because I've heard it come down by, you know, because I'm a life sleeper, but, you know, you know, the thing is, you know, that, that's another thing, you know, the street sweeping, because when you don't, you know, it clogs the drains, blah, 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 has flooding, and so, that's another one that I, I always ask, you know, if we could at least get it quarterly, or every year of the month, but I know, so, do we need, do we have enough equipment to run regular street sweeping?
We do have, I'm trying to think, we do have currently four sweepers, and that's historically what we've, what we've done, and we're able to get through this thing out, but the other issue is, a lot of times, night shift when we do the sweeping, gets pulled off for pothole complaints, gets pulled off for barricading, gets pulled off for, so, you know, when I started at the city, the, the guys got in the sweepers and they drove all night, you know, and that's not necessarily the reality of it currently, just, and again, it's, it's staffing levels, you know, we don't have enough people to, to augment that third shift to where you do have the guy that can go fill the complaint pothole, or go throw out a barricade for LPD or LFD and, and those kind of issues, so.
Thank you, and, and I told your chiefs when they were here, but for, for you guys, thank you for your service, these last few months have been a little crazy, thank you for your service out at Michigan State, thank you, it was, it was, you know, and just thank you for what you do every day, it is greatly appreciated.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Cost?
Thank you President Wood, I just have a quick statement, I just wanted, as a union member myself, UAW, just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate the, the work that the frontline workers do, you guys are the backbone of the city, you are what makes Lansing, the city government, so great, it's not elected officials at the end of the day, it's, it's the folks that I meet out on the street, the, the officers, the firefighters, the guys filling our potholes, they're the ones that are, are working their tails off for this city, so I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein, and then I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, last question, I promise, Dennis, I, I guess it's a question for you, and I'm not certain that you know, we have heard quite a bit down here, we've also been tagged on Facebook, about yard waste, compost removal, and the fact that there is a, a fee that's paid that helps to cover, as an example, seasonals for the, for that particular work, and my understanding is that we are supposed to have some six positions for that, that work and, and other work, right, that kind of falls underneath that umbrella, in any event, my understanding is that... In any event, my understanding is that we had one individual return, one seasonal return. We also had a recruitment fair, a job interview fair not, not long ago. Can you tell me right now how many of those six positions are actually filled?
In solid waste, seasonals, just the one. You know, they, this requires a CDL for that job and we just don't have candidates. We've, we've tried to fill it and it's, it's open all year, but, so.
Okay, so, so we are then what? We're paying our workers that we do have overtime to work Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Is that?
Not, not Saturday and Sunday, they're, or 10s, so usually a lot of Fridays they'll run.
They do four 10s and then they're, then they're working Friday?
During compost.
Okay. Are, do you know if we are, wow, that's tough, man. You guys, you guys are working hard. Do we, are we at this point caught up in terms of our, our rotation, if you will, on yard waste, do we know?
They have currently been maintaining it, so. And actually, we've got a, a plan if they get too far behind, so.
Alright.
To assist.
Thanks.
Okay, gentlemen, this is my question for you, each of you. Part of the strategy that we received information back with questions that we asked on, for the Finance Department, on how we were going to look at next year's budget. There was some talk in the information that was provided to us that there was the potential of looking at the vacant positions that we currently have and if they hadn't been filled in sometime, cutting those positions. It was a conversation that they said they were going to have to sit down and have a conversation with the Unions and that. Having been here when we cut positions before, I know what happened. So I realize you're all working with less employees than what you are budgeted for and you have placements in the org chart for. If those vacant positions were cut, how would it affect you and your service? And Dan, don't jump out of your seat at me.
He'd like squirm it over here.
Yeah.
Right now, that'd be about five a day for us, five people a day. That would take us down to 36 people a day. That means an ambulance and an engine would come out of service. Not necessarily those two rigs, but that would be the five people a day that we take out. And I'm going to tell you right now, we cannot do that. We're bare bones right now. We're getting our tails kicked in. There is no way we can leave those vacancies open. No way. We will not be able to provide the services to the citizens that need to be provided with less than what we have right now. It just won't work.
Ryan?
Same. I mean, we haven't been fully staffed. And for three-plus years, four-plus years, cutting those positions and saying that we're good and operating at what we currently are right now is, we, we can't do it. We're bare, we're barely getting by as it is. If you go on any, any day from probably about 1:00 PM to probably about 2, 3:00 AM, there's anywhere between probably five, 10, 15 calls that are holding throughout the entire city. Some of them are more serious, some of them are minor, but that's not acceptable. I mean, to tell somebody that you have to wait three hours for somebody to come to one of your calls? Who, how does that give anybody a sense of security that you, you call, but you're going to wait? And the more people that we cut or the positions that are eliminated are going to make that even worse. That's a horrible idea. Horrible.
Dennis?
Well, you know, if you look at the streets, you can kind of see what happens when I have 30 vacancies, so. But, you know, the other issue on that is running that vacancy factor. That feeds back into, that's people not paying into the pension system. That's also creating overtime for the other people that are, which, again, the city pays that bill at the end of the day on the contribution to the pension fund. So, yeah, it's huge, you know, and, you know, Elizabeth's taken over HR now. I see she's making process changes, so that's, that looks like that might start moving in the right direction now to where we can, where we can start filling some of these hopefully. But again, attracting CDL drivers is almost impossible at, at a municipality at the wages we're at, so.
Jason?
I just, I agree with Ryan, but just to go a step further, we're already in a current state of triage with our calls and our investigations where we've had to be creative and calls are not getting, they're getting taken over the phone, whereas historically you'd have contact with the police officer. An example is for frauds, we've set a dollar amount for investigations because we can't investigate them all. We just are so short currently. Everybody's burnt out. And I think that's a lot of our attrition, where we're losing people who historically would have stayed, however, officers are getting burnt out. And it's been touched on by some of the council members that, why stay here when you can go elsewhere for same amount of pay, but a third of the work? So in theory, you know, you can draw them in with a $5,000 signing bonus, but if we cut the staffing and after five years they've assumed all their signing bonus, they're just going to skip to the next greener pasture. And I think we're currently down 20 spots and as we fill them, people leave. So if we're to continue at the rate we're going, you're just going to have burnout. You're going to have officers having to pension out because of stress levels. It, it's not getting any safer out there. And when you're sending, when you only have one person available to take a call, they can't go to that call because it's just not safe. You have to wait for someone else. So if we continue at the rate we're at, it's, it's not feasible.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We want to thank you for spending part of your evening with us and we appreciate, appreciate it. And we appreciate your service and please pass that on to the employees that you represent to. Thank you. Okay, a couple of housekeeping things before we move on into our discussion items. First, I want to remind council members that on Thursday, yes, Thursday, we have our Committee of the Hole in the public and that Committee of the Hole will be at Foster Center at 5:30. So please remember that and we need to make sure that we have a quorum there. We have two council members already that have said that they won't be there. So we do need to make sure that we have five there for the meeting. Second of all, I'm passing out, and this is for council members to take a look at. And we will have a further discussion on this next week. I asked Emily to put together some figures if we were to reduce the miscellaneous operating budgets from all departments, 5% and 10%, what that would look like. And on the back, there's information on the back. And if you see, if we did a 5% cut, what we would be doing is only spending 1,700 and, 1,000, $173,000 of our rainy day fund. If we were to do a 10% cut, we would actually be putting money back into the rainy day fund. So those are things for you to take a look at. And we can have a further discussion of this on next Monday when we're looking at this, okay? Next is discussion and we have a resolution of appointments. Vice President Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So I would like to move the substitute as there were some items that were incorrect in the original resolution.
And Sheri, would you like to form what the, what those were?
Yes, if you look at the substitute resolution for the reappointments for the Board of Fire Commissioners, it originally said Mallory Wallace. The last name is Willis. So that has been corrected on the first page and on the back. And then the Board of Public Service, Jason Wilks was an at-large member for the term to expire June of 2027. So that has been corrected to state June 30th, 2027.
Okay, those corrections. So we have a substitute. All of those in favor of the substitute, say aye. Aye. Posed? Okay, now to the resolution.
I would move the resolution for reappointment as we have had an email from the administration that all of these have been vetted.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. It's not that I'm going to vote against any one of these people necessarily, but since they're all so important positions, especially, you know, I always talk about two, two boards and commissions, Board of Water and Light, which is not up, and Lansing Police Board of Commissioners because their job includes the budget review, which is what we're talking about. They're supposed to go edit it themselves and kind of give the mayor an overview, administrative rules, training procedures, all the times that we talk about, oh, let's talk about de-escalation training, let's talk about using non-lethal force, let's talk about bias training, and most importantly and most relevant today, mental health awareness, because the police are very often coming in contact with people who have, are suffering from different, sometimes untreated illnesses. And how the police respond could ultimately determine if something ends peacefully or not. So we talk about that and the Board of Commissioners are responsible with, in conjunction with the chief, of ordering that up, regulating conduct from the police, that's all important. And the complaint procedure, had I been in the, I think it probably was public safety meeting, I would have asked Mr. Damon Milton and Mr. Guillermo Lopez about the, how many complaints have they heard, how many have they been involved in, anything like that. But because I know these two individuals, again, with Mr. Milton, and I'll probably say this again, I was concerned last time because he's the chaplain of the Lansing Police Department. And as the years go on, he's been the chaplain for that many years. So not that I would accuse him or even think that he would do anything wrong. I think it just has an appearance sometimes of impropriety just because, and I would ask him about his conflict, but he's told me before that it doesn't affect him and that he thinks he has a better understanding because he knows the officers and he knows the people so well. So knowing Guillermo and Mr. Lopez and Mr. Milton, I'll support them. But I didn't want us to just pass it along because these appointments are important and I just wanted it to be talked about.
So just to be, to clarify, you're not asking us to separate and moving those out so you can vote differently?
I'm not, but at the committee or at the council, I'll probably just remove it from the consent, say something shorter and probably support them.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion for approval of these reappointments. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed? Passes unanimously. Next, Vice President Garza?
Alright, thank you, Council President. Next before us, we have the resolution and I would move the CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Alright, we've had public hearings on this and we've gone over this. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving the resolution, say aye. Aye. Posed? Passes unanimously. I do believe, Councilmember Jackson, that the appointments are on the consent agenda. And so you're asking that they be pulled off the consent agenda so you can speak to them?
Yes, and I'll keep it short.
Okay, alright. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing else, we are adjourned.